Very good. It's shortly after five, we just got noticed from Mr. Viberay's break a couple of minutes late. Lauren Simpson gives her apology. She is on a business flight right now. I want to make clear it was a business flight, not a vacation. So I'll call to order this workshop that we are having tonight on Tuesday, May 10th, following the same format we did for our workshop that we did last week. We were supposed to use the format of that, you want a roll call or not? You definitely have a roll call. So I'll cause to order, this is for purposes of discussing diversity, equity, and inclusion actions that we're going to be doing here at the city. Let me start out by saying we get off on the wrong foot on this thing. I think, you know, we as a council weren't clear enough, and frankly, we should have had this kind of workshop before we moved forward with whatever direction we were going to go. Obviously, a lot of this came up when passions were very high. I think that there's clearly a sense that there are issues that we want to address and make sure we're addressing them properly. I think there's some real questions in terms of the scope of what we want to accomplish. And Randy has followed the lead of Lisa.
I tried. I don't know if I can move on to it, but I tried.
Yeah, I appreciate what you've put together. Did you want to pass that around to everybody?
Anyways. Paper copy.
So thank you, Randy, for doing that. Certainly give us an opportunity for some discussion points as we, as we move forward. Mr. Devin, anything you want to say to leave the conference? Or follow my lead on this, whichever.
Well, I'll definitely follow your lead, Mayor. The, you know, from the standpoint of our, of our team, what we are intending to, to want to determine from this is to receive direction from the City Council regarding the future community, community, community consideration of diversity, equity, and inclusion, including the formation of an external DEI task force and engagement of consultant services for an internal audit of city services. And if that is not the case, then we would continue what we're doing on an internal basis because we believe that has been, has been very valuable and frankly, well received by a lot of members of the city team. So what we want to determine here is, is how we move forward with the internal process. And I think the other, you know, other information that we've laid out in the study session briefing is pretty self-explanatory. I want to thank Matt for helping me put together, as well as the other members of the city team that have a hand in that. We're ready to have the discussion.
Great. I'll open the floor. Maybe, maybe we should break this into two parts, the internal.
I was just going to ask kind of an opening question.
Okay, go ahead.
That I don't know how to answer. It's what are we, what are we trying to solve for? We're trying to solve for the employees, the 700, or 700 and some odd number of employees? Are we trying to solve for citizens of our ballot who interact with city services?
So I would offer more of a latter, not the former. The, the, the services that we're working on for our, for our city employees, we've, we've already done, made a lot of changes for our organizational development program to, to address those kinds of issues. And we're, we're also making changes around our internal operations as we, as we start to identify, frankly, as a result of, of our internal training, as we start to identify barriers or concerns that are affecting members of our community. So, for example, and we listed a few of them in this, in this, in this paper, or this briefing paper, we included, we hired a, within infrastructure, we hired an ADA coordinator. We hired an ADA coordinator because we understood that we needed to have more expertise on, on providing for people with disabilities, excessive, you know, making our facilities much more accessible, our public infrastructure, infrastructure much more accessible. So we hired an ADA coordinator. We had, we had asked our facilities manager to kind of do that. It was becoming so specialized and with engineering specifications changing around that, that we, that we hired an ADA coordinator to make that change. You know, HR has done some things, removing language in our job descriptions and policies and things like that to, to make sure that we're inclusive, municipal court's implementation of the One Small Step program. We see that as an example of addressing equity issues and also trying to figure out how to, you know, certainly it's around, focused around addressing homelessness. But, you know, clearly imposing, you know, never-ending fines or other kinds of penalties on homeless persons that don't have the resources doesn't necessarily serve them well. So we're trying to figure out a better way to serve them. And, you know, the, the BCN, you know, there's been lots of examples around providing more accessibility to programming. But the, the latest one that we included here is having the National Association of Interpreters, you know, providing support to us as we program the Justication Leadership Center. And there's, there's a lot of others that I, that we, that those are, those are the ones that we include in the. We feel like, we feel like we're on a good plane in front of an internal standpoint. But we're, we're focused on, the way I write and construct this briefing paper is, are we committed to an internal process or not? And part of the, part of what I included in this briefing paper is a copy of the statement that we made back on June 11th that basically indicated that we were going to do an external service.
Jay, go ahead and finish.
So again, I just want to be clear that, or not, I'm not clear. I'm trying to frame so that I know from what lens to, to view this from. So if I'm, if I'm a citizen of our ballot or just a person that comes into our ballot that wanders into one of our parks or wanders on one of our sidewalks or drives on one of our streets, happens to wander in the city hall, I can get all of the services, I can have access to all of the services related to any one of those things. So those, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to focus our thoughts and efforts around in this conversation.
It can also even include something like when we're looking at future developments, you know, making sure that we're looking at the lens of inclusivity in the sense that maybe we don't need to do two steps to get into the house. Maybe it's just always, you know, a slight grade so people that are handicapped could also try. So people that are looking to downsize or move have better environments that are around as well, meaning not capacitating.
Okay, it's marketing. Isn't that just a marketing?
It's this inclusivity in the sense that if it costs the same to do a ramp, or not a ramp, but like a slope versus two steps, why not do the slope because it's more inclusive for people with disabilities?
If you were a developer, you might very well.
Maybe they don't know that.
But if someone else is a developer, maybe they might think something different.
Maybe part of this could be that we're also educating other people around, hey, have you thought about this? This could be better and more inclusive and the cost is the same.
I mean, I don't want to fully leave that point. I had, I had a comment, David.
No, I'm talking about subjects you were on, so.
To me, it sounds like, Mark, a bunch of this internal work we're doing is also external. So you mentioned the ADA court. Any idea what percentage of that FDI's time they spend on internal in city facilities versus external in our ADA plan about corners and street lights and crossings and sidewalks and all that kind of stuff?
And I would say that depends on, I'm going to say this season. When we're doing our programs, at the beginning of the year where we're going to be in concrete, there's a lot of time focused on where that is, a lot of involvement there. When we're looking at facility and updates for our capital budget, a lot of time spent there. So I, I.
Itty-bitty?
I would bet more is on the ex, oh, I'd bet more is on the external. I'm really speaking out of my knowledge based, my observation. The ADA program is huge right now and planning for that.
So we're kind, we're kind of doing some of these things already, even though you described that as internal look. The reality is, is at least some significant percentage also external.
There are, there are external benefits.
Talking about the Justication Leadership Center, things like that, that's, that's certainly external. So it's not that we're not doing external things. We are doing external things. The question might be, are there more external things beyond what we're already doing? But recognizing we are doing external.
I would, I would agree with that statement.
Yeah, Randy?
Well, I mean, I think too, it's, it's, we don't know what we don't know, right? So part of this is to do an assessment, figure out what is, you know, out there that are barriers to certain areas of community we're not aware of and accessing our resources to the city provides. And we think about public safety, making sure that everyone feels safe. What does that mean? What are some of the conflicts there that we're not aware of? So a big part of us doing that kind of assessment.
We have funding for the task force.
We, we did include, I, I have to double check this, but we did include some funding in the one-time funds that Dave Orment said that I can also.
And was any of that already used? I mean, when we terminated the consultant, we paid something?
Uh, you know, that, that, that was pre nominal loss at that time. So that, that was not probably.
So another, I'm going to, you're, you're my resident expert.
I am not.
Not a resident. So, freedom. So.
Just sort of.
Um, cheers. So when, so Randy, when, like, I'm sorry, we appreciate you framing this in your, your pager. When you're thinking about the discovery process and what that looks like, how do you, how do you envision discovery? You know, if you, if, if this was your opportunity to kind of lay this out and say, here's, here's what discovery, here's what's perfect for me in discovery, how would you lay that out?
And I have to be honest, I'm not an expert in this. So I, you know, I, I think that's where, you know, it comes back to finding the right consultant that presents, you know, a, a tool and metrics to do that. And I, I certainly don't have the expertise in that. I would have to rely on someone who does that and, you know, they do do that, right?
My, my fear is that we get an expert who's going to find a problem just to create.
Validations.
Validation, work. I mean, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen here, but that's my fear.
Well, that, I mean, and quite honestly, that's where, that's my fear in the consultant. And that's my fear with any consult. And that's why I don't like consultants. I mean, consultants are really, really good people. But, but there's, you're, you're paying them to find a problem or, or you're paying them to find a solution to something.
Without a clearly defined problem, what are you paying for?
Right. And so that's why I, that's why, to me, for me to get comfortable with a consultant, I'd like to, to, for us to be clear on what's it that we want this consultant to do? And that's where I'm struggling?
And that's why I tried to start on this. And again, like I said, this is my effort. Like now being an expert. So I, you know, I just tried, and I pulled from, you know, resources that we already have as a city and are already done work on. And, you know, I, I, I wasn't that familiar with our DEI committee charter, which had a lot of this in there. So I don't know if, Mark, you want to speak a little bit about the work that led to that? Because I'm not that familiar with it, so.
Before, before you do that, Mark, can I ask one more question? That probably you are one of the team, Laurie or, or, or Kristen, an answer.
No, I'm saying, I just didn't.
But as you, as you think of, or as each one of your members of leadership, they all have relatively large organizations. Have, have those organizations internally developed any kind of, for instance, we'll talk about police, first, getting to Randy's comment about safety. Is there, is there anything that the police have put together already that gives some guidance on this? Because, and I guess where I'm going with this is that we've got a lot of subject matter experts. Each one of your leadership team is a subject matter expert and they all bring a unique set of skills and, and abilities to their role. And have they been able to kind of uncover any of this conversation? One internally, which you've already talked about, but two externally? Have they done any of that work that you know?
I'm not aware of any external work.
Okay.
Certainly not anything that's been organized. And I think that's part of what we're, what we're getting at, why we, we believe we need to, to do this is that, is that the external work has been informed mostly by industry best practices and resources. It hasn't necessarily been informed by conversations with the community. And I think that's where we believe we, we could, you know, kind of using Randy's statement of we don't know what we don't know. With, without more engagement with, with the community, we're, we're afraid that we may not know.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I was just wondering if there was any work that the team had already had to kind of uncover some of.
You know, certainly among best practices in the police department is training around implicit bias. You know, and, and, and then, you know, you know, we, we, ultimately after the George Floyd tragedy, there was emails, and you guys remember many of those emails, asking whether or not we, we do chokeholds and how do we, how do we do, uh, restraint and arrest control and all those kinds of things. And, you know, I think Link answered probably somewhere around 200 emails from people across the community that were, that were contacting us after that. You know, so he was relying on, on best practices and training that, that, that the PD has done. You know, so, so that's, that's, that's something that we can point to. But are there other things that we could or should be doing? And I think that's part of what we are hoping for.
So, Mark, I would ask you, is our internal committee focused on talking to the police about implicit bias?
No, our internal committee is more focused on making sure that a lot of these training activities are available to the entire organization.
Including?
Including.
Including, right, yes.
Right. And, you know, Leland may be able to add some of that in on that as well.
So wouldn't that be another example of something we're doing internal, but also is external? Because I got to imagine, whether it's a police officer, a code enforcement officer, animal management, billing code clerk, bill, utility billing person, if they're receiving training in implicit bias, that they don't go, well, when I'm talking to my coworker, this means something. But as soon as I'm talking to the public, I forget all that stuff and I treat it differently. I got to think this internal thing is also external.
Sure.
I guess there's value in offering something like that to external people if they also live in our community.
See, that's where I started to struggle, is that I don't think we as a city council or as a city can fix all citizens.
But couldn't we find?
One, how do we have jurisdiction there?
Could we find partnerships or nonprofits there in the community that could facilitate it?
Well, the chamber is doing it in terms of, you know, they, they put a big emphasis, which, you know, certainly addresses what Randy's brought in here in terms of the business community. That, you know, there certainly, so yes, I think there are entities, nonprofits and others who can.
Well, I think churches, churches are doing it and certainly the school system is doing it.
Mark, when I talked to, when I was campaigning, a business owner who's been there 50 years, female business owner, called me up and said, why do you have a black person on this, right? And for that to be a level of comfortability in which a person could call and say that, that is a business owner that is been here for years, tells me that as a community, we are doing enough. And in turn, maybe that means that city council or the city team could look at ways of supporting it. That doesn't mean that we have to fund it ourselves through the city, but maybe we're partnering with other experts that in the community could help educate. Because if we just have the city staff trained, but other people in the community that don't often interact with the city staff and it builds and it creates this normalized environment of racism, is that the environment that we're doing?
Can you repeat what the person said?
I didn't catch that.
Um, so on my flyer for my campaign, there's a picture of me and my, my best friend when we were serving in the military. And he's black, I'm white. And she called me and asked me why I would put a black person on my bailor in our ballot. Because don't I know that this is a predominantly white place?
Okay, but that's not a city problem. That's a problem of, of, of a person. That's a person problem.
Yeah, and that's, that's just one example of, of an interaction. But what I'm saying is that if people in the community are comfortable enough to have that kind of discussion or that outward rage about something, then it's not just one person. There's, there's an environment in which there can be more people. We just don't hear it.
So I would disagree full-heartedly with that. I think you find people who have distasteful views everywhere. I don't care where you go. I just had a conversation with someone actually, new to our community from the East Coast, of very distasteful views. But I don't think that's an indictment on the community. I think that's a remote stretch to say, to say that. I would also say that when it comes to that individual who contacted you with, you know, boorish comments or terrible comments, whatever you want to call them, the city has no jurisdiction on them. I mean, what's the city going to do? Withhold their business license if they don't comply? I, I don't see where the city's interest at all, isn't it? Is the community's interested in it? Yeah, probably. I think churches, chambers of commerce, nonprofits, neighborhood organizations, individuals, good people, probably all have an interest in that. None of those is the city. I don't think the city has any place whatsoever.
If people in.
I'm leading by example.
Yeah, absolutely. Which, which I believe we are doing in stage with this internal process we're doing it. Looking at all the touch points where we touch the public, making sure we're good there. But to step outside of that and say, now the city's going to assume this overarching role to, to try to dictate, correct, coerce individuals or business owners' behavior. I don't see the, I don't, I don't see the, the possibility of doing that to any satisfaction whatsoever.
And I don't think that's the purpose here. I think the purpose is, when we talk about having an external component to this, is about taking the pieces here of public safety, infrastructure, organization and service effectiveness, union economic development, vibrant communities and neighborhoods, and getting our community to make sure that they have access, that they feel like they can equally participate in the process here. And we're not going to get that if we just stay internal. We have to go out in the public and get their feedback and we have to hear from people that we haven't heard from.
A question I would ask about that, Mark, you guys keep good records of this. Do we have complaints? Do we have anybody complain about utility billing that they, we were treating them improperly?
Just ones that were forced to use trash haulers, but other than.
You know, I, I would, I would say that complaints around how services are provided from an equity standpoint are very rare. I would, often I would, what I would also say is that I think there's opportunities for improvement in certain areas.
But what if we get complaint, we look into it, we investigate them and proper action, we take action and look at our processes, our, what caused that to happen, whether it's an individual or whether it's more.
If I, if I may, if I'm calling the complaint and I'm only Spanish-speaking, how does that work?
Well, I don't believe we have a Spanish-speaking complaint portal. You know, we would, we would have to rely on an employee being able to make contact with, with somebody who speaks a different language and be able to take the complaint that way.
I think that is just one example of maybe you don't hear a lot of complaints from different backgrounds. Everything is in English. My, both my grandparents, my mom, they didn't speak, English was their third language. They didn't complain because they didn't have a mechanism in which they could. So perhaps that data could be skewed.
I totally agree with you. And I think that that's, that's one of the, that is a big hurdle that we've got to figure out. We have, we have multiple languages within the city.
Cover them all.
So is, is there, is there a, is there a translation service line, right? I totally agree that that, from an accessibility perspective, we've got to, to bridge that gap for sure.
At least you might know this better, but would you go other places in the world? Can you go to Italy? Do they have a complaint line in Spanish and English?
You can get one of them or.
Well, I get that, but I realize Europeans tend to be much more multilingual than we do. But how far does it go in other, in other places? I got to believe if I'm in Norway and I want to file a complaint with the local government, I probably don't have a lot of language choices by which to, to do that. And so.
It weren't, I'd say Europe is more culturally diverse, so they're able to speak a multitude of languages.
It may be more common.
But there's also way more inclusive services and practices than even in just our ballot. Meaning like, you know, I worked in the Boston Bears office and there was always someone on a call doing sign language. There was always the Spanish version of any sort of public announcement. Those were two just defaults and that's in our own country.
Well, it gets into a different discussion about, you know, official languages. Because, you know, what if someone is an immigrant here from, you know, name it. We, we, well, we took a bunch of Afghans and immigrants into this country. How would we provide that for them? And do we have, you know, at what, at what level, how far down the list do we go in providing services to every possibility that exists? I, I would challenge you and say that it's not possible.
Yeah, I can tell you how we do it in the state. So state of Colorado, when there is a request. So we say, let's say for example, for city council, we're having our meeting, our agenda posted. If you require translation, you can call or email this number and then we will get someone. It's $200 for two hours to do a, a translation service. So there are services, nonprofits out there that you could contract for, for services. There's tech adaptations that you could, when you go to the website, it automatically transfers to your preferred language website. But if, you don't need a, a person for every language. There's tons of tech out there. That's just one variable of just showing how our data might be skewed because there's not engagement of different demographics.
Do we have any idea from our demographic data, how many people have no English ability within our population? Or only a different language speaker besides English?
Oh, yeah, pretty small. That's a data point that anybody collects.
Even if you did do it in the census, again, it could be skewed because people are great, different demographics are great to give that information. But that is just one example of a scope that we could be looking at and task force saying, hey, how can we be more inclusive in a sense of language just alone there in our services, in our outreach and our communication? When's the last time we saw Facebook goes in Spanish? You know, I think that that is just one aspect that if we can create some sort of scope around how to be, have engagement of different backgrounds, that's just one area that I would, what we could utilize this service for.
Yeah, Bob, you've been pretty quiet until, you've totally quieted.
How's it going? So can, can we take this into bite sizes? Because it really turns into like, to me, it's boiling the ocean kind of concept because there's a lot that you can point and poke at and create issues around. You know, I kind of think about, well, what's within our control? I think we need to start there and move outward. And what's within our control is our ordinances, our employee relations handbooks, our website. There's a house bill, I was just looking at that, House Bill 1110 that requires that your websites are accessible in the hall. And your plan has to be turned into the state by this July and has to be eliminated by '24. There's things happening. Part of that accessibility is blind for not hearing, language, all sorts of things. So there's, there's already activities, there's a lot of work just internally in the city to be accessible. Let's just kind of call it, bigger picture, accessible. That I feel that we should start there because that's leading by example. Leading by example is creating and open an accessible city hall. You're, you can communicate with us in different means and fashion. You can come in and get a police report or a utility bill and have a multi-language website. Maybe even encourage more multi-language employees and give them increases for knowing multiple languages. You know, I, I just think that if we do that and we lead by example and make sure everything is tied with us. I mean, the one thing I was saying is like you said, the steps to the door, we have an ordinance called the Zero.
The visitability.
Visitability, there you go.
And we, we repealed it.
Yes, because
People aren't using it. No, and it was raising the price of homes needlessly. Um, and I think my comment at that time, we we asked about what should we do with the money we've collected for people paying for of of doing our design. And I think I said, can we apologize and do it back? You know, it's like something you just can't force. Like, well, these are market market forces.
Well, I mean, that maybe we should reassess that with this basic climate and stuff and maybe there is some middle ground around that discussion, visibility. Maybe, you know, people are doing townhouses, you know, can 1% or 10% of those townhouses be zero? Because then you put it on the homeowner to build ramps, do other things that cause hardship. So but those are little things that we can do within our our ordinances. Uh, I I would be a little nervous to just reach out and try to solve the war of the ocean on all the other issues that are out out external to the city that's outside of our control until we can lead by example. And and I think there's things in the works. We just need to polish them and celebrate them. I I don't know if we celebrate them, you know? Do we? Because I know the city does a lot. They are, police department does a lot. There's reasons why we were not using body worn cameras because of the quality of checks and balances, the managerial hierarchy and how that worked in rotation. But we never celebrated, you know, how we keep uh, police um fair and on our toes and and, you know, focus on our community. We didn't talk about how we're structured, you know? I I just think that we should start there. Because I don't even know what our ordinances are. There might be some ordinances that might need to be refreshed. We just, there's so many out there.
Well, is that process happening ritual? I mean, are we reviewing our ordinances there?
For diversity and equal inclusion, there's some efforts around that, but there's not any one coordinated effort to do that specifically. So for instance, when we update documents and when we update ordinances, um, we try to make sure that pronouns are inclusive and things like that. But there's not one overarching view of that. I also don't know. I I think I would echo what Mark and what Randy have been saying in terms of there are probably some things with our ordinances related to DEI and we just don't know what we don't know. Um, they may be affecting different groups differently and we're just not aware of how that's happening. So, um, yeah, but but that's that's the the general scope of it. I know at one point we charted have a study done on um, our personnel rules related to equity from specific perspectives and the pronoun issue was one of them. So we've been slowly discussing those things, but it's kind of overarching.
I mean, if you're trying, I'm sorry, to close up on my comments, if you're trying to focus that we're gonna bring in a consultant, this is where I boil it down to. We're trying to bring in a consultant. The way this conversation is going, I don't know what they do. I ran, I think, used some good guardrails and how we should think about here. But what are they going to accomplish? We should start with bite sized discussion. Like, maybe we shouldn't have somebody come in and look through all of our ordinances, hire an external person just to go through it. Everything for pronouns to give you some questionable areas that don't uh, uh, maybe fit our ADA or handicap uh, uh, you know, expectations of our communities that they can flag and let us review those. That alone is a huge effort uh, to to create a thriving community that's inclusive.
Well, and I also think too about our processes. Do we, you know, how we do things, you know, I'm thinking like, you know, the time that we have, public meetings, and we, you know, have a way to for the public to engage, are there barriers we're not aware of that people aren't there because of those barriers that we're just not aware of? And is there a way that we can easily fix and address that? And so I think to your point, Bob, I mean, I don't disagree with you at all about starting in, but I think we need to have an external component to locate.
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, somebody to freshen off.
But I mean, even even having an interface with the public that is, you know, affected by these policies and ordinances to be giving us that feedback.
So I I'd like to interact with like a um, a progress discussion, but but to kind of capitalize a little bit on our thinking on this whole thing. And frankly, it was was mentioned in the in the uh, in the charter and also mentioned in the statement, uh, that was released last June, I'm sorry, June 11th of 2020, that 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 we would we would look at our internal processes um, to determine if there's anything that could be changed or improved on or or information that we don't know. You know, kind of capitalize on, we don't know, we don't know. But part of the reason for an external audit auditor, for an external auditor to conduct it by someone who's trained in this area, there they they would have the ability to look at this more from an equity lens than we do. I mean, I'm 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 not qualified. I'm not trained in that area. I'm trained in other things, but I'm not trained in that area. And having somebody look at it from from that standpoint will would give us some insight that we wouldn't have. And in terms of bite sized um, uh, bite sized steps, if you will, Bob, as you as you indicated, because I agree, we don't want to open up the entire scope. We don't want to spoil the ocean. But um, the the vision that we that we uh, tried to establish with the DI DEI consultant is that they would provide us with a set of recommendations to you, to the city council. And 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 the city council then would then determine, um, you know, what recommendations are are we going to go forward with? There's it's likely that there will be a set of recommendations that will that will be further than we want to go or cost more money than we think we want to allocate or something along those lines. I really likened it, and I I still believe the example of uh, to what we received back from the citizens capital improvement project. There was a long list of capital projects that were discussed. Ultimately, that there was a list that was provided to the city council for you to act on. And 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 I believe that list was longer than what we eventually decided we would want to include in our capital budget. You know, that was probably one of the most successful citizen engagement processes I've ever been in, not just here, but anywhere uh, in my long 41 year career. Uh, so um, I would, you know, I would offer that, I think the same kind of thing could happen here in terms of the community engagement. Um, and and I'm sensing that there will be several things that we probably didn't think of uh, when we actually, you know, before we actually started doing this.
So and I I would agree with, you know, doing that capital for the capital improvement process, but but I will say that that was during the time I was running for uh, council the first time was when that was all kind of coming coming to an end. And I remember there was a lot of discussion about decisions that council made, and they were the wrong decisions. And, you know, rocks being tossed at council because council decided to go down this path rather than go down this path. And that's the thing that I fear is that regardless of the decisions that we make, community is still gonna be pissed off. And they're gonna be mad and they're gonna, they say, we didn't, we didn't pick the right thing.
But we run that risk at everything we do.
I know.
And you
That's why we're elected to
Yeah, but you make a good point because citizens capital improvement committee was a good example. I agree. I think some of it was really good work, but it also went off the rails, but they were um, not supervised enough. And they took an approach of saying, well, here's our 10 year capital improvement. Funding available, how would we split it up? And that provided little value to us.
I think it was unconstrained.
It was.
I think there was no budget. It just said, oh, everything on a laundry list.
It was it was completely unconstrained. Now, the part of it that was valuable to us is they took these potential capital improvement products, that pro- projects that we defined. And they ranked and put them in order of most valuable, least valuable. And I think that was worthwhile. But the part of it where they just said, well, if we had a hundred million dollars, here's how we would split it up because we have done only a little bit of it. The way they would do it because it doesn't understand the universe that, you know, that that's that the other factors involved within that con- that conversation. It was too open, too free reeling. And I I think this, I think you hit right on the head. I think this is exactly the same. That I I think we can invite dissatisfaction if we say to a consultant or a task force or anyone, say,
Bring us, bring us
Here's here's the money, bring us everything you want and we'll pick from it what we think what we think is right. I think I think we invite all kinds of strife and dissatisfaction over all kinds of things, probably some of them which we have absolutely no control. But
So going off of kind of what Bob was talking about with regard to bite size, because I agree, I mean, that that's boiling the ocean, right? Um, you know, and so and now I'm just, I'm talking out loud, right?
It's good, Paul.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking out loud here. So, you know, the way I'm thinking about this in my mind is that if there were, you know, a committee, the committee can help with with council conversations. What are those top? What are those top things? Using Paul, you know, our our uh, ordinances as one of them. What are the other 10 things that might be on that list? And then say, okay, we're gonna take these one at a time. So then I ask myself the question, okay, so then what does after we after we determine what those things are, we hire a consultant to come in and go through all the ordinances, whatever that looks like. Um, again, using that as an example. Then what does that committee do? That's that.
I think it's a limit, would it be a limited scope of the task force would create, so we're taking citizens that would come from our RADA to develop a task force that would say, these are the areas in which we believe we need to improve as a city. And then they bring that to council and say, yes, 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 no, no, maybe. And then we hire that consultant for those four identified areas in which we should be excused. Is that right?
In a lot of ways, yeah, in a lot of ways, you guys already kind of provided us with that feedback. At the bottom of page one, um, we were intentional uh, from the notes that occurred, uh, you know, following the January 10th workshop, uh, where you wanted us to uh, uh, keep keep, you know, keep the scope of work focused on customer service and avoid mission tree. Presenting a clear set of specific measurable go- goals to know uh, when we've been successful, when we've been successful, increasing council input early in the process to make sure that we keep those guardrails around what we're doing. Um, making sure that we um, uh, engage in the work that, uh, remember that in in the process of engaging someone in this work, if they're aware of our unique local dynamics, um, uh, including participation where we're able to and be mindful of the sense of nature of the work that would seek to unify, not to not to defy. Um, you know, we would probably work on how we would operationalize those points better in our P E or something along those lines. But but that was that was part of what we received back from the the feedback from the annual workshop.
And and couldn't, you know, I don't know what we call these, but pillars of our strategic plans, couldn't they be in that framework?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, just to create consistency in my golden thread would be awesome. I don't know, it's somewhere. But
Gee, does it think I throw a good question?
Sure.
Yeah. I said, just got off of.
Um, so, you know, I kind of was thinking about this too. It's like, what would what would it be? Because, I mean, honestly, I deal with consultants all day long and I'm in the same thread. I I mean, love them to death, but I just try not to spend any dollars on them because it just, it's continuous. Um, and and so when I think about it, I was I was thinking, maybe we should come in and kind of give like, what are the top 10 themes that cities are going through with DEI? Um, start getting them kind of structurally put around and use a DEI advisory committee of citizens to kind of do the CPI kind of path, which is here are the 10 things, here's where we're going, check in with the advisory committee, yeah, that kind of looks good. Go tease it out some more and then come back and maybe excuse that to say, look, we found these potential opportunities to improve. What do you guys think? Yes, we agree with you. Take those to council and then because then there's a sounding board, there's a relationship. Let let's not, let's not make the scope so wide that we we will never accomplish anything. I'd rather bring in a consultant and say, give us your top 10 typical themes for sub- suburban cities, uh, you know, uh, that maybe you found and and somehow thread them with an advisory committee of citizens. And and you know, the only thing I think to worry about citizens coming in and telling our consultant what they're looking for, it's not maybe educated or informed. And I'm a little worried that if if we do it that way, I'd rather have a consulting kind of bounce ideas to them and then back.
Right. I I defer that over what I think was originally planned with the
The first one.
Consultant because I saw all this consulting work and then they're gonna have the task force two years later. And I really see it working together.
It should be a check in, maybe a recorder or something, just to see, does it meet the themes that our citizen advisory group would would agree and maybe get a readout every six months to us. But um, I I think we try to do bite size, maybe 10 too many, maybe it's five. But I'd rather have successes and celebrate those successes than try to do analysis, a process by analysis. I mean, you know, for, I would like to see movement and and subtraction and maybe we just start smaller.
How do you eat an elephant?
One bite at a time. Yeah.
You disagree?
It's just funny.
Oh. My employees tell me not to eat elephants. Um, so I switched to how many layers are in the menu? Um, but there's, you know, there's a lot. So that would be my recommendation. Um, I think that wins both. One, I gotta be, I'm a little worried about staff time and how far we go. Second, second, I think we need to show successes and propose on a few things. I think if we structurally make this feel good and it works well, and say we pick the top five and it works and we know there may be some work that will refit it out and do the next five. Um, or maybe out of the first five, we find out the next five are because there's cross dependencies. You know, I, as you know, I've always focused on ramps and and ADA compliant parking spaces and that kind of stuff. My mind always goes, that would be elderly. It would be nice to have a diverse group that looks culturally, physically, um, all the different equity kind of questions that come up. You know, I hope we get an advisory community that's that diverse. That would be ideal for me. Because my fear, my my only fear of this whole process is it's gonna be uh, very singular focused on maybe just race.
I'm sorry, Bob, or what?
Singular.
Singular.
Like it's focused on just rapes. Um, and and I don't think that's the problem. I think it's it I think it's a problem, but it's not the problem. And so I really, I mean, for me, I think we don't do enough around our handicap disabilities.
Well, I think it all, for me, it all comes down to accessibility. How how can people assess
Yeah, it's probably
City services across the board.
Physically, verbally.
Be it, be it, be it by language, be it vision, be it hearing, be it whatever.
Yeah.
You know, and making sure obviously that we don't have internal biases and say, we're not gonna listen to this group of people.
Yeah, I think you just stand in a
But I can just add to the accessibility of services, but also engagement in the city policy process.
Yeah. So you don't see the same five people at the council every day?
But but but
We shorten that area?
I mean, do people have inability to engage us? Is that what you're saying? That's the question.
Cool. I had a call today on one of my seven grand calls today. There was a person that said, um, how frustrated he was and he used the RADA app and could not find a phone number to get to a person to complain about something. He's almost gonna call you later.
But that doesn't have anything to do with inequitable access. That's a that's a business suggestion.
He was saying He was saying that he had to go to the website to click through rather than clicking through his phone.
Yeah, sure.
And then when he called, no one would pick up. It was just a voicemail.
I've been I've been getting that fairly regularly lately. I think we need to get somebody to answer the phone again.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, but those aren't DEI issues.
No, but it's it's
But it's accessibility issue.
It's accessibility issue that they can't, because they gotta do it phone tree.
Right. They don't know how to look online. They're older. It might be disabled, they have G I.
My problem with that's just a customer service issue that applies to everybody.
That is a member in the community that cannot reach the city because they have some challenge, albeit something mentally, something physically, they can't get a hold. And that is what Mark is saying, but that it's not just a race DEI component, saying that elderly or disabled people still can't. They have trouble with their utility bill and they can't get a hold of someone. Can't figure it out.
If I grant upon I too would not do that. He has a hard time trying to deal with this phone, you know? I I just I think accessibility, accessibility is a is a big topic. Um, because there's a lot of different components to it. And I would agree that that's something that we've gotta be at the top of the list of unpacking, right? But I get what you're saying also, John, that that's also a customer service issue. And so, you know, that's a that's feedback.
I think I I think I think in some cases, customer service and what we're talking about, both.
Yes, absolutely.
And and so, um, you know, we might think of customer service one way, but from another lens, we would think we would think perhaps in a in a wider way, which might help us. You know, again, I I think one of the things I saw as an opportunity here is is this would give us an opportunity to better fulfill what our mission statement says, which is to enhance the lives of everyone by by providing superior services. And 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 you know, I think that's how we've always viewed this opportunity to take another look at how we could do better.
So, because I had another thought to my head, would we do the Zoom for any of these? I said, is it? Um, pretty close caption underneath?
No.
No.
But I think they
I think you can select that on your own.
If you select it. If they select it.
This is your Zoom.
So that would be a question that we would need to figure out when we hook up with a self-help provider, Zoom. We need to ask those kind of questions. That just needs to be in our culture to remember our We need to ask those kind of questions, that just need to be in our culture to remember or our key that you have to have.
Yeah.
But if you're watching on channel eight, it is, you can't.
For SAP or whatever, uh you can't post cabbage, post hatching.
But like people watch online or comes on the app. Um you know, maybe the function's there, but we should have instructions that explain how you can.
I've seen on this tonight, we're getting comments, are we gonna be able to share with council the comments that are.
Yeah.
Well, I can't read, we think we're both never recorded, right?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, you can download this, we can download the chat, yeah, just don't edit it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Give a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that, but and and not unlike our other workshops, you know, we don't take citizen input during, but it's gonna be valuable to have that.
I'd like to see the comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll uh we'll get those transcribed and uh you probably.
Good.
Uh so I've kind of been taking notes, but it sounds like the scope that we're looking at is accessibility to services and engagement, reviewing ordinances, barriers for engagement, desired improvements, infrastructure development, uh public safety. So.
But what is public safety? That seems so vague.
We don't have it, we haven't talked about it. Um.
You know, it's funny, I I had a conversation with both the Edgewater Mayor and to a lesser extent the Golden Mayor about they've got communities that feel very uncomfortable having the in in both instances where the police department was in the same building as the library. And that just came as a shock to me.
They were very, the community didn't look at police department in the library.
Yes.
For what reason?
Which we have in the old.
Yeah, exactly, that's.
They are, they are there everywhere.
Yes. Right, but and I think, but what I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think our path is somewhat different than some others.
So we don't, we don't have the big walls and stuff, because like room buildings have stuff to do, some like whatever they've seen in their malls and stuff. But I like because I think there's been just unfortunate situations that make it still unsafe in in large settings, you know? Um but I I don't know, I think the state public safety one is a different skillset of a consultant that I wouldn't lump into this one, assuming we really do it, I mean, I don't even know what the clean up process is and all that. I mean, I I know that's for documentation and processes, but I would assume to us to be one of the oldest standing accredited police departments in the state.
Yeah, and and those standards.
That, those standards evolve and change, they adapt.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But for us to have it for what it, I don't know, how many years now, twenty uh twenty years? Something like that, thirty, yeah, we're one of the oldest in the in the in the nation, I don't think people remember that.
Well, that.
Maybe we need to celebrate that again and remind folks that what that means to us.
Wasn't there a little old accredited?
Accredited police department. And see, and there's a lot of scrutiny around that, in fact, and we're evaluators now, correct me if I'm wrong, you're the team, but I mean, we're evaluators now to to give accreditation to other police departments. That's how well performing we are and we should be celebrating those, and I'm sure inside there there are some things around this topic within those sort of accreditation. But I wouldn't lump it into this discussion because I almost feel like if we were to pull that in, we need to bring in a specialty group that's focused on public safety and DEI. Well, we saw you for that conversation. They should be part of that conversation, because I mean, we, you know, we can fix the ordinances and I think we should be involved with some of these ordinances because they may know things that we don't know that they're like, man, this this is the word right.
Have we had any complaints about, I hear this fix our ordinances, and I get that, you know, historically we use different pronouns, so I get you can, you know, painstakingly go through there and wordsmith a word here or there. Is that really what we're talking about, that within an ordinance passed somewhere in the past that it says he instead of several different options or, I mean, it seems like that's not.
I should say code, I should say.
It seems like that doesn't fit the meaning.
Ordinance is a code, I should say ordinance is code, I should lump them together.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it would be an ordinance that prevents, allows something for one person and prevents somebody else from doing the same.
Oh, yeah, like they can shops.
Well, sorry.
I mean, it's I want that, it's not both of the others.
I I disagree. See, we've had that comment, I just disagree. The uh the and when I say one, I mean, shops aren't one, I'm talking about individuals. So do we have ordinances? Has anybody ever had a complaint that we have an ordinance that allows one resident to do something but doesn't allow another resident to do something?
I I I can't, I can't give you an example.
Or stops one resident for doing something, but stops somebody else.
I I can't give you an example. Can you give me an example of that, but. I'll give an example, I have an example, one, I think you fixed it now, but I always had a problem with if you hit a dog, it's a felony, but if you hit a police dog, it's a misdemeanor. I but that's just, it just, it just doesn't equal the inequity in it.
But if you hit a police dog, if you're old or young or different race or different education or different anything, you're treated the same whether you hit a dog.
No, but my point is, is they're both.
Or it isn't written for the dog.
But see the lens you look at it, look at the well, look at the inside, it should be written for the police dog. Because it's a police officer.
I agree with the tree.
It's also a thirty thousand dollar dog, it's a thirty thousand dollar dog. So uh you know, it's a misdemeanor, so the thing is, yeah, we discriminated against our own police asset. And that we said, oh, it's a misdemeanor to hit a police dog during its activities, but if you have somebody's dog next door, you beat on it, it's felony.
But that's not a, that's not a DEI problem.
It's it's not, it's acceptable as inequity in a situation.
If these people are.
In that.
I'll cut this one off.
Just a short, so that's.
I'm just using an example with any treatment.
It gets confusing here.
As far as reaches you. Yeah.
I guess, I guess to answer this question about is there complaints about ordinance? Is it that we are a community, a council and a city that is reactive that we are now saying, oh, didn't look at that policy, our bad, now we gotta change it versus proactive in making sure that we are being fair, we are being inclusive, we are being safe, so we don't have to crack head alone to fix it?
And. And part of the, I think the part of it is too, that we may not have perspective to identify some of those accessibility and ethnic issues. So to give an example along those lines, like anytime I read the code or policies and they refer to the city attorney as a he exclusively, that grates on me, but it might not on someone else like a you know, a man who's reading, it may not really jump out, it may not really jump out at them.
Like a. Like a.
It may not really jump out, it may not really jump out at them, but it's because of my perspective and my life experiences that it would jump out to me. So similarly, there may be things that I read the code for and it doesn't stand out to me at all, but it would stand out to someone who hasn't, has different life experiences and perspectives.
What?
So that's what we're kind of, I think, looking at.
So I guess, for example, I can get that, I totally understand it, but if you look at the the cost to return on something like that, when instead the the, you know, an ordinance that refers to the city attorney as a he doesn't prevent you from doing your job, just like, just like anybody else.
Yeah.
So while it might be personally irritating, we should fix those every time we find those. To spend a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars to go through and search that all out and wordsmith that all out, doesn't seem like a an a reasonable task or expenditure. Doesn't mean it's not there, I acknowledge it's there, I acknowledge it's real, but also doesn't harm you, other other than.
Right, that example, that example does not, it does not harm me necessarily, it might.
Yeah, that is. That would be, but where are there examples where we harm somebody with a wording in an ordinance and then we say, well, we don't know of any and we're unqualified as. Is it possible that aren't any?
It's possible, but I think that's part of the reason why we would be good to engage with the community to find out. Uh and 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 we have volunteers in the community who would be more than willing to sit down and read, so that we don't have to.
I think there should be.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a really good point, but there's also like a business case here that you could refer to in the sense that if you don't fix some of the language or some of the messaging or some of the inclusivity, you're losing out on people that might want to work here, that don't feel comfortable, don't feel welcome to work here. You're losing out on top tier talent, and if you look at studies of diverse organizations or diverse companies, they perform twenty-five to forty percent better than any just.
So so let me, let me give an example of, of I think that that it's somewhat in line with what you're saying. And and this is something that that's a revelation to me because of uh our our internal training where we've uh you know, where where we've had uh some of our internal training around um uh you know, call box LLC and 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 other uh resources that that have trained our employees. What they've talked about is that uh as a as a community, as a community that's composed of our demographics, we can, that alone can present a unwelcoming sort of of um environment to people of color. And people of color don't necessarily feel comfortable coming to our back and they have to negotiate what they taught us around white space. Uh now, you know, is that, is that something that we should be concerned about? Well, you know, if we are going to eventually be a more diverse community, I think it is. And if it's, if you know, if we if we don't do that, you know, are we, are we actually, you know, projecting ourselves as a as a welcoming community? I mean, I think these are questions that we at least have to ask so that we are, you know, at least sensitive to it. Why did we offer the redlining uh training to our employees? Well, we felt like it was important for them to know the history and that there has been situations where, you know, people of color were not, you know, encouraged or at least or that some cases allowed to live in Jefferson County years ago. Is it relevant today? I think it's relevant that our employees are aware of it, I don't think it's relevant, you know, certainly.
It's not going on.
It's not going on, while it certainly isn't going on that we know of, that there's no redlining uh you know, the the you know, documents, but but you know, it's a perspective that I think our is is valuable for employees to know about.
It's a history that makes people, may make people feel unwelcome and uninvited to come engage with you and to interact with the services of people who are.
Right. Right.
Seriously.
You you mentioned something, Mark, and I'm not picking on you at all, this obviously didn't come from you, this is, but but you said you mentioned the the things that people might not feel comfortable navigating the white space.
Yeah.
Imagine if you went to Denver and flipped that around. What would you be called, what would you be called?
Navigating the like.
Uh huh, yeah, what what would you be called?
The white space. Well, and so.
You'd be, you'd be called a racist.
And so our 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 trainer actually flipped that around first and said, how would you feel walking into Five Points? Well.
I walk through Five Points periodically, that's a lot of me a bit.
Yeah, and some people, some people that are people of color may not feel comfortable. And so he was trying to kind of show that, I mean, look, you know, I I'm I'm trying, you know, we we are.
I get, I I mean, I'm not attacking.
No, no, I I I know, I I appreciate you, right, I appreciate, I appreciate the.
I'm not bringing those things up, just scratch a nerve.
Yeah, well.
What we're doing here.
And 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 so some of what we hear from the community is along those lines. And and if 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 that's their perception, is it better to know about that and find a way to tease it out and 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 deal with it, or is it better to not know about it?
Mark, can I qualify your your comment there? Is is not a perception of people engaging with sys city employees? Or is that a reflection of what they view our data as community?
No, I.
Okay.
So the Arvada Springs kind of.
That our data community is due that way. I don't even know how we can even answer, we can't force people to live here, we can't kick people out, we can't, that that's far from it. It our data is what our data is. We are just need to make sure that we have done everything we can to be welcoming and accessible. If if this community is more than eighty percent white, it is what it is, we 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 didn't, we can't, we can't pick that, you know what I mean? I come from El Paso where it was, it was ninety percent Hispanic and like five percent white. And you just, you don't pick who lives there, they decide who lives there. You know, you, we get to decide our properties that we live on. Now, what I would say is I feel that the city is a very diverse city employee base, and I want to thank the HR team and the city, the employees because they are diverse. I see more diversity in our city employee staff than I do in our community, seriously. And I think that is, that is a huge uh applause to looking, you know, beyond the discrimination and racial and all the other comments. Um I think that is, that is leading by example. Continuously making that our city diverse and welcoming for our employees, which in return will make their citizens feel welcomed. You have police officers of color and inspectors of different uh gender and so forth coming. I think that that, that's how we lead by example.
So understanding that, having our employees understand that, I think can also create a situation where where we can be even more welcoming to our employees who are people of color as well.
Yeah.
So so that's part of the training, but I think, you know, I I, you know, I think we're, we're trying to be responsive, you know, to to these, you know, to these um to these issues as they're as they're identified so that we can make sure that we are being as inclusive as possible.
And I just think we need to distinguish between, we made comments about whatever, we were just talking about white space, whatever you call it, but
Yeah.
you know, that, you know, we are only as good as what we control, I I have to go back to what we control, we can influence and what can we control? We need to be very clear about what those boundaries are because we can influence through our leading by example, but some, we can't say who can and can't live here.
But we can make sure that we don't put a barrier to anyone.
Absolutely. Absolutely, but I think, but I think with where they interact with the government, because we don't have any influence over anything else.
Well, I I agree with that to an extent, but I mean, one of our pillars is vibrant communities and neighborhoods. And you know, and I think that we put, we put a lot into where we live in our community and how we provide access to resources in our community so people can interact with each other and feel welcome in the community. So I think that in and of itself says that we should be thinking about that too.
Did I hear correctly that we would establish a task force to develop the scope, then the consultant would be hired or have.
Yeah, that's what I want to get some, I'm sensitive on is what's the order that we're gonna do this.
I think Bob, I, what I heard Bob say was the opposite of that.
Yeah, I think I said, I might have said that, but again, I was not, I was shitballing.
Let's let's talk about which. Let's talk about which way we want this to work.
Right.
Is it better to have a consultant come in and give some the top five or top ten areas that we could potentially work on, just from a sense of what, usually from other suburbs.
Is that what you're hearing? That are similar in size, similar.
When I, when I interpret from what you said, Bob, is that we would, we would look at there's, there's a lot of DEI work that's occurred throughout the national, particularly in local governments. We would look at uh the scope of work that has been done uh in other communities, you know, relative to our size, characteristics that's similar to us and and bring that back for further study.
So we wouldn't even need an consultant for that, you would be able to do that?
I think we can, I think we do research.
Do that internally, just that, that's great.
Yeah, I would rather do that.
Yeah, I would too.
And then, and then once we do, we figure the scope out, right, to what it looks like, then maybe bring on a consultant to help drive.
Well, it's more simultaneous with putting together DEI task force.
Well, I mean, we can, we can probably use it as an appointee, right, I mean, we can appoint this task, we can do that parallel, but I I think what needs that, just my observation would be is pick the five or ten, we pick whatever, or whatever they fill are the top five or ten based on character and everything else. And and at the same time, we put together that task force, they can start digging into those five, ten items within the city. They're not gonna have anything right away for the, I wanna call it an advisory group to bounce off yet. They need to dig into whatever those five or ten items are, and then I would bring it back to bounce it off to the advisors. I don't know if the advisory or task force, wherever we're calling that, needs to be filling out the scope. I I don't know.
Yeah, how about, how about if we?
I I just feel, it might get too big.
Yeah, let me make the suggestion that we bring back the um uh you know, the the varying scopes of work for uh similar to other communities our size and then also the methodology that they.
Okay, well, that's good, I don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Well, and what timeframe you think you can do that?
Um, Matt, what timeframe do we think we want?
Let's go, Matt.
Um.
He's already got.
Well.
He's like done.
That's a month. So approximately one month.
Okay. And then, and then would we have a workshop on this or?
Uh we could do a workshop or perhaps another study session, whenever you guys are comfortable.
I almost feel like a study session might be. Good, I I was being myself, but I like this more informal, because because I still don't know if we have the meat, potatoes, or what we need.
Right, which is this one? Is this a workshop or is this a study?
This is, thanks, I studied.
This is a study, so you're saying another.
And that's, like.
These are studies.
Such studies.
Just trying to relearn.
They're the new words.
So if we are going to be doing a task force and the scope is going to be external with the connection of city services, then while that next month is spent aggregating some of that information and lessons learned in other places, would we want to start developing what that task force is comprised of and working on that?
Sure.
For a.
Well.
In terms of the type of people that would, not in like our discussions, but this.
We have, we have around this whiteboard.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I think we could, yeah, we could provide more, we can future that, no, I think what, I think that's part of the methodology that we could work in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I I agree with really advocating that we have complete diverse views in front
Yeah.
uh people with disabilities.
Age.
Age, because I've seen here, I've seen youth, yeah, uh a race, I I would, I don't know how we advertise a board to be that diverse, you know, that
She claims youth and. Age.
you know, we're gonna actually list the characters.
Well, you know, there's some.
No, 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 there are.
Well, you know, there's there are, there are, there are, there are some examples, there are some examples that I'm aware of, and I'm not suggesting this would be the way to do it,
You need to.
But there are some examples I'm aware of where the council actually invited certain people to be part of the.
All right, I I just wanna make sure that those, when we talk about barriers, it's hard to say if somebody's in a wheelchair, that whatever we're talking about, and we don't have somebody representing somebody who is disabled, to be able to live live a mile in their shoes.
Right. Yeah, right.
So I I wanna make sure if we're really talking about inclusivity and accessibility, we need to have all views at at that boundary.
Yeah.
I I don't know what the legal legality is around, uh, we're looking for someone with a disability, we're looking, you know, like, I don't think you can.
No, well, that's that's where I think, where I think some of this is come from, is that is where council members have invited people, um, you know, to be part of it, but the idea that they're they're trying to get a diverse views, I mean, you know, like there's, for example, there's, I think they're called across disabilities, uh.
Oh, yeah, power across disabilities, yeah.
Thank you, and yeah.
Or or non nonprofits, every nonprofit, yeah.
Yeah.
That's number one, right, yeah.
Yeah, and 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 um, I I know that, I know cities have invited that organization to help them with accessibility issues in buildings. Um, and and you know, maybe we could contact them, see if there's a our ballot resident that would be willing to to be, you know, part of that, I mean, I think there's ways to,
Yeah, because.
uh, again, we'll include this as part of the methodology to give you guys options, but that's, that's how we could do this if we, you know, are committed to this process.
And to clarify.
You're a great action.
I I like to.
Well, I expect us to retype that since it was on.
No, I'm done.
No, 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 no.
Well, we're 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 taking notes, if you've noticed, we have a very quiet, writing in a book, and we'll include, we'll include a summary of of what we're talking about.
So what was your summation?
Um, just to clarify the public safety comment, because he said it was too big to put in here, and he's doing research, I don't know if we even wanna include any of the public safety.
Well, I think we find out if the D public safety is what what I assume probably will be, but then, but in what way, you know, and I I truly agree with you, Bob, that our police department is among the best, and I frankly don't think we have the issues that have gone on in other parts of the country and parts of the Denver metro area that 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 are there. Now, we may get feedback in this process of, you know, we're naive and that there are issues that need to be addressed, but I think our, you know, I think Link has got his officers marching the straight and narrow in terms of not engaging in improper.
But I think accreditation is just, it's nice for me, it it we open up the hood, we let them look underneath.
Well, and part of it is requiring the college to, I mean, you don't get the, you know.
But a part of it is probably, sounds like a taboo comment, wonders that we don't have as much of a challenge in the police department because we are pretty homogenous here. Meaning if we did have a twenty percent uptick in diversity, would we see similar problems in other cities?
It's an interesting question.
That we.
First, how?
The first, how?
If there's different backgrounds, that are like.
Yeah, correct, but correct, and how, are you talking about racial diversity?
Social economic, racial diversity, you know, disabilities, all those different demographics coming that make it less homogenous, would the city.
I think our police crackdown on criminal acts, regardless of who do that.
I I agree. And that's been pretty clear in.
I think we're we're affluent, and so we have relatively less crime than other places.
Some different kinds of crime.
Situated, different kinds of crime, but but last, particularly last violent crime, largely because we're fluent, that has anything to do with race.
Yeah. I think the thing to remember though, especially with, especially with our police department, is that um, they they will come into contact with the more diverse people, because people from other communities come to visit us.
Yeah.
And and so when, you know, so the 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 important, the importance of their training around implicit bias and those kinds of things is is beyond our ballot borders and 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 more associated with the Denver metro area, and certainly we want them to be, you know, they have the same level of professional policing as they would, you know, they had kind of somebody from another community who's personally colored versus someone who lives here, whether they're personally colored or not.
Yeah, I don't want someone who's a person of color, minority, or whatever, to feel like they're treated differently by our police than we treat anybody else. And I and I don't think they are.
And and I don't disagree with you, and 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 my only comment, though, I think Lisa handled this earlier, was I think that there are times when we need to applaud what we've accomplished, but also be proactive, and your statement there that, you know, we're not like other cities that have had these kind of problems, let's keep it that way, right?
Right, exactly.
So I think it's, this is the time for us to, before we're thinking and saying, what are the steps we can take? You know, what is the, you know, feedback we can get from our community to better understand some of these issues so we don't have those problems?
That's right.
And 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 I, the only reason I try to separate it from the overall D E I, I I think that the overall D E I, their employees that we treated, you know, through the process of the employee side, but they're also specialized in laws and protecting laws and the constitution, and and I just feel that maybe that's a specialized consultant to come in that focuses around specifically law enforcement, you know, that maybe the general D E I consultant may not, I I just felt that, and I'd like to know what the CLIA, the CLIA accreditation looks for, and then what can we look beyond that? And so I think we need somebody that knows about the 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 CLIA um, accreditation, and that's why I wanted to separate that out a little bit. Um, just because they could look at it with a even further, or maybe even more critical lens possibly, I don't know, but that was my thought process, please. Okay, so I I just wanna make a statement, so we've got twenty some odd people listening, I looked up and saw one comment. And it was, our batten should be embarrassed about some of the comments that city council is making. That to me is exactly what we're talking about, and you know, if we can't have these kinds of conversations, then what are we doing there? You know, if we can't have open and honest dialogue around how to make the city better, and still have criticality from citizens listening, that's defeating the purpose, and so I don't know who made it, all I read was the comment, and that's why this conversation um, is so politically charged. Because we can't have honest, open communication amongst a city council without the citizenry looking at us through a, through a lens and a scope that doesn't fit theirs. So.
They're individuals, they're individuals.
I get it, but so are we.
You know, I know.
And so if I can't speak honestly with my fellow council members and learn about, you know, how we how we make this better.
But David, we we represent everybody, right, and we're representative government, and and because one individual wants to make a comment, we we only walk away.
I get it. No, I know. But I'm just saying, but that's the, that's the challenge with this conversation, it's is that we have such a cancel culture, that if you say something wrong.
You'll be pistol whipped.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, so, but but the recall papers together.
I I'd remind you that we have a hundred and twenty thousand, so it's.
I get it, but I'm just saying, I I look up and I see one, the the only comment I see is that, and I'm like, really?
Yeah, because I think this has been a good discussion.
I do too.
I mean, given it is a hot topic, and we have different experience backgrounds, I think it's been a great conversation.
Yeah, and I and I agree, I think the diversity in our experience and who we are, even our, even though this is nonpartisan, our political backgrounds, our life experiences,
That's weird.
um, you know, and who we represent are the citizens, family, friends, and everything, the visitors and the businesses of our community. And when we're this diverse, and we can at least get consensus to go in the right direction, or at least a direction, that can't be wrong.
No.
To me, it's a win, and and here it's a step closer to achieving what we're looking for as D E I, just let's look into it.
Right.
I think you hit it right on, let's applaud our successes, but let's link forward, and that's what we're doing, and we have to have crucial conversations as a as a group and work through our diversity in our own opinions to get to consensus, and I think that's the healthiest thing that our ballot city council's done in decades. I've only hit a decade, but you got two decades on there.
Yeah, I think that's why this is a dynamic group.
No, that's that's.
At least you have diversity involved.
We can have.
We certainly do.
We can, we can agree to disagree.
And these are not easy.
No, that's why we're having study sessions, because none of these are easy, if they were easy, we would have lifted them up and just bust them through a, you know, a a consignant that I am. But they're not, so I I just let me just say that I appreciate each and every one of you, and and the diversity that you bring to the conversation. Um, and I again, I think that's what makes, you've said this a million times, Mayor, this is why our ballot city council, and it's changed, I mean, I've only been here for seven years, and it's changed over those seven years, but it's always been a an awesome group of people to work with and to have our conversations with. So it just frustrates me that some can't see it.
Yeah, I remember when I just started running, I was like, why would anyone hate me, and I'm doing great, and then every angle you got hit, and it didn't matter.
Right. Didn't matter what you said.
I'm I'm in year one.
They did that to everybody.
Yeah, but I never would have thought that, you know, people would be so mean, but.
Yeah. Sorry, I just.
Well, it's okay, I I had to say it, because it.
No, that's fine.
No, this is good, is everybody?
So can we review our next steps on this?
Uh, next steps will be that we will uh, research uh, some of the communities that have gone forward with P E I work. Uh, we will research their scope of work, uh, how they, uh, what they, what they, um, uh, what they carried out, or what they're in the process of carrying out. We will research their methodology and bring that back to you for for future discussion.
In advance.
One month.
In advance, so you're.
Is that, is that boring, is that, is that?
Yeah, we're good. You got it. And then the formulation of a task force, that's that one.
Yeah, so the the, that would be part of the methodology, is how they carried out that work, but um.
I think I'll worry about who's a membership of a task.
Right, that's part of the.
It's just like a housing feedback, all of it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we'll look at that as part of the methodology.
Diversity on that task, we got that particularly of a thought, so we'll have a.
Yeah.
And we'll try to.
Study session part two.
Yeah, we'll study session part two, we'll try to get that done.
In advance. Okay, so we're gonna air the thing in a month, this thing, right, which will include what could be in the task force.
Right. Yeah, right.
And then and then then we'll know what the timing would be to form it.
Right.
But would it line up the the housing, if that cadence?
Uh, well, the housing, remember, we we talked about moving forward with that as part of the, just part of, is part of the pleasure pleasure process, and also
Normal. Yeah.
the uh, process for um, the uh, uh, improvement for uh, warrants and conditions, but we actually did talk about that today. We wanna put together a timeline on that and share it with you, so that you guys are are in agreement with with the direction of timing of what was going.
For this one or the housing?
No, for the house, yeah, yeah, and we'll do the same thing for this one.
The housing. Because I think this one, well, after we get some information, we could probably open this one up earlier, because I think that this this task force would be a.
Pretty specialized.
Yeah, specialized group, and it'll be different.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're here right now, so I can combine scope with your mission.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and and then depending on exactly the route that we take, you know, whether or not we have to do a a solicitation for our consultant, or whether or not we might go in another direction, or um, you know, how we need to do the solicitation for consultants.
Okay.
So all that will be coming back to you.
And we and we have had a consultant before, I'm talking about the before the January one, but we have one. Other than that, it was more like.
So we, so we, so we engaged with Gare, the girl that had the lines on racial and equity.
Okay.
We engaged with Gare, we had a uh, consultant that we utilized with Gare, he was basically a facilitator that that um, uh, helped us with two community meetings, and then he provided some feedback to the city council uh, via meeting in, I think it was December.
And he was local?
He was local, yeah, he was local, he's now, he's now working, I think, uh, I think he's worked for Denver, Denver National Airport, but uh.
Okay. Okay. So he's no longer a consultant?
Yeah, as far as I know, he's not a consultant.
Okay. But there, so can I ask additional request that is where, because I know that there are, you talked about other local consultants that we might look into. Is there a way also as part of this report to kind of pool what those options are and what consultants, can we add that too?
We certainly can do that. Yes, we could do that, yes.
Good, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
There you go. Um, just don't have to call, anyone can.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
I just mute.
You understand that, the the, so, yeah.
No, that's.
Don't end it, don't end it.
I want it.
Yeah, yeah, but you can mute it.
Mute in front of.